Your hair is red.
Merritt, good Irish.
Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. We're calling the August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Town Council Committee, the whole meeting to order. First up is roll call. We have everybody present except for Counsel Pacino, who is unable to make it, but he said he will try and make executive session later on in the evening. And Counsel Bordaline is online. First up is calendar and communications. Counselor Merritt, do you have anything you would like to share?
Oh, really not tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Rusk?
No report.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
No report.
Counsel McBride?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Counsel Gajewski?
Just general emails that everyone received.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
Nothing to report.
I'm sorry, Counsel Bordaline, I skipped over you. Counsel Bordaline. Counsel Bordaline, you're on mute. Counsel Bordaline, are you there? All right, so we have Counsel Bordaline online, but she's not responding, so I'm not sure she's actually in the meeting at this moment. So I'm gonna, I guess we would consider her absent at this time. Cusserberg, is that how we would?
I don't know if there's a set rule on it, unless she acknowledges that, yeah, I suppose so.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, it wasn't letting me hear clearly.
Okay, do you have any calendar and communications that you'd like to share?
I just received several phone calls regarding the rule changes with folks that were not happy. Folks that felt that they just had a lot of concerns with the direction of that and were saddened by the outcome of that. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have the same communications probably everybody else did and some other things going on this week. But during this, I'd like to take an opportunity to maybe not do so much calendar and communications, but to ask the council, because I've heard from numerous councillors that they would like to have a discussion regarding the, an operations review of the school budget for the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four budgets. And I wanted to take this time to see if we have a consensus to put that on a future agenda. All those in favor, just say that you would like to do that on the future agenda?
Yep, yes.
Okay. I think that we have a consensus to at least have a discussion. All right, thank you. And then next up is approval of minutes. Two zero two four dash seven three nine, Counsel Parker, would you like to take that?
I make a motion to approve the committee, the whole meeting minutes of July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Parker, seconded by Gajewski. Does anybody have any changes or? Okay, seeing no hands, we'll take a vote on two zero two four dash seven three nine, the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstained.
Okay, that passes seven to zero to one with Bordaline abstaining. All right, up next is two zero two four dash six eight eight, Recreation Trails and Grants. That is on page?
Seven.
Seven. Counsel Gajewski, would you like to read the motion?
Item two zero two four dash six eight eight Recreation Trails Grant, Recreation Trails Grant. Motion to recommend resolution to authorize the town manager or his designee to execute and receive the Recreation Trails grant in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand dollars and refer to the RTM per Rule six dash five dash three, so moved.
Second. Oh, moved by Gajewski, I'm gonna, seconded by Jones. Good evening.
Good evening, councillors.
Good evening.
Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation, and to my left is Tabitha Wilson, who's the manager of Parks and Open Space. So we are here this evening in front of the council to request your approval to receive a grant from DEEP in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars under Recreation Trails Grant in order to continue making improvements to a project that we started back in two thousand and sixteen out at the Cop property. At that time in two thousand and sixteen, there was a couple of sections of trail that were done. We put a bridge in out past the dog park, and we put in a kiosk and a really nice trail map showing all of the different trails out at the Cop property. And the grant that we submitted will continue that work, kind of fill in the gaps. The long-term goal is to have the yellow trail, which is a loop trail, to continue this work and have that accessible using, putting down stone dust as a surface, which is much firmer and easier for folks to utilize. And at this time, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Tabitha to talk about some of the other, what I think are really interesting parts of this project.
Thank you, Mark. We also put together a couple of slides for the council so that it's a little clearer what we're talking about. As Mark mentioned, this is a deep recreational trail grant award, and deep releases about ten million dollars per year, or this year, on these grants. Cop Family Park is located kind of centrally in Groton, as you can see on the map. It's heavily used park. There's a dog park there, and it's really well-known for its accessible trails and nice wide passages. It's also part of the Greenway system, as you can see. So as Mark said, this, the work began early in two thousand and fifteen with earlier improvements, and then now we're really trying to focus on inclusivity and that being opening it up for people with visual impairments, or people who are handicapped, or young children, or elderly people. So really having more accessible trail system and creating a loop trail eventually. And this is the sections that are also included in your agenda packet that were part of the grant award. Part of this grant award is construction, as we've talked about, for new trails, but also we are looking to purchase several items, that being an accessible trail wheelchair, similar to something you see here. That's a wheelchair that has like mountain bike tires on it, and sometimes levers to push and pull so that someone can easily use a trail system. So we would have one wheelchair, and then we would rent it out, or have someone who would coordinate those, the use of that chair. And then this is a short video on the Soundscape software, because it's really exciting stuff. It's this Microsoft software that they're just developing that'll allow people that are blind or visually impaired to use the trails. Whoop, didn't that work? It did. We have IT support here to help. Thank you. It's a three-minute video. It just really illustrates how it works, which I think is helpful.
Hi, you're here today to talk about the Microsoft Soundscape app, which is an application that allows anyone with low vision or visual impairment to be able to have mobility and independence. And to help me do that, I have Amos Miller with me to really give us a real demo of this application. Amos, do you want to describe Soundscape?
Soundscape is really cool, okay? Using a stereo headset, it lets a person who's blind or low vision hear where the landmarks are around them in three D. And in this way, they can build a richer awareness of their surroundings and feel more independent and confident to explore the world beyond what they know.
That's pretty cool. So it's kind of like it paints what's around you in sound.
That's exactly what it does. Shall we try it out?
Let's do it. Let's go.
All right, so you have the headset on.
Yes, I have the headset.
And you'll start by pressing around me, and just listen to where the landmarks are and tell me where you're hearing them.
Around you. Park two hundred and ninety-five feet. Microsoft Building thirty-four, two hundred and ninety-five feet.
Soundscape effectively takes the same map that you have running on the phone and plays it in three D sound. Isn't that cool?
That is so awesome.
With Soundscape, instead of turn by turn instructions, we will place an audio beacon on Building thirty-four so we can hear where it is.
Got it. So this app knows how to rendezvous with that beacon?
Exactly. So we'll set the beacon.
Okay.
Okay, there's a button.
And so should I also do the same?
Yeah, do exactly the same. And on the top of the list, you'll see Building thirty-four access ramp.
Do that.
Access ramp.
Yeah.
Okay, access ramp. And on your right ear, you'll start hearing a clicking sound. Can you hear that? Let's turn towards the way you're hearing the beacon.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's completely centered, and you hear a bell sound that tells you we are pointing at Building thirty-four. Okay?
Yeah.
Now, of course, we can't walk. There's a road on the way.
That's correct.
So let's walk along the road and find a place to turn right.
Okay.
All right, let's go. Straight on. You can hear the beacon on your right as you walk along here.
So I know that I'll have to at some point turn right.
That's right. So I'll start queuing the dog to find a crossing. Have to find a crossing. You might have received.
Yeah, in fact, I got even.
The intersection announcement.
Yeah.
Okay, have to find a crossing. So you really work together with the app as well as your, as well as the dog in this case.
Yeah.
Safe to cross?
Yes, we are.
Have a forward. And now, as the beacon straightens up.
So cool.
Right in front of us, you should be able to hear the beacon right in front, which tells us that we are walking in a straight line towards our destination.
Yes, but the interesting thing here is this can be useful for anybody who's in a new space, even if you're fully sighted.
That's right. This is inclusive design in action.
Correct. Yeah, because as you said, you know, you land up in a parking lot, or you land up in a campus that you don't know anything about. Obviously, our campus, our buildings are not numbered in sequence. Very helpful.
Good boy, Trevor. And we are at the access ramp.
That's right.
Good boy, Trevor.
Awesome. That is really awesome.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much, Amos. This is wonderful work. Where can people go get this app?
People can get the app for free on the iOS App Store in the U.S., in the U.K., in Australia, and we're working to get it to other countries as well.
It's awesome. Thank you so much. It's such a pleasure.
Thank you.
So that's just a quick summary of how it works, and we'll be able to take questions at this time.
I just want to give a little bit more backstory. So unfortunately, Microsoft dropped this project, and it got picked up by a number of developers, and they have been working on continuing the work that Microsoft started. And they're at the point now where this software is available. It's no longer free, but we built that into the proposal that we submitted, and we have worked with them. In fact, we've been working with the Southeast Connecticut Community Center for the Blind and Visually Impaired, and had them come out, and we set up a course around the walkway at the Quantic Plains Park. And we had blind and visually impaired individuals using the software and provided feedback to the developers who then incorporated that into the most recent version that we have. So it's really, I think, kind of exciting, and it's not going to be limited to just, to just the Cop property. We'll be able to set up courses on any number of our parks that are suitable for somebody that's blind or visually impaired. And they will be able to download the app, get the trail map, and utilize more than just the Cop property.
Sounds sort of exciting, technology. Any questions? Counsel Gajewski?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson and Director Berry, for coming this evening. A question through the mayor. Does the software that was just displayed to some of you, is that part of the grant?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that was my only question. I just want to thank you for finding that software, because supporting our, our blind community members is vitally important, and giving them access to nature, I think, really just welcomes people like that to our community, and I thank you for including that inclusivity. And I will be in favor of the motion on the floor.
Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I threw the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Berry, and Tabitha, thank you very much. We've been, I'm part of the Trails Committee, and we've been listening to the, this has sort of gone through the process of coming on board. And so it's exciting that we're sort of at the forefront of some new technology that can help visually impaired. So I think that's commendable for everybody, and it's great. I thank you for taking initiative on it and bringing this forward. I'm just, I'm looking at the map. I just want to make sure. This is the Cop family. So the grant will cover the red part and the orange part, is that?
Yes, that is correct.
So those will be the new trails that you'll, that you'll put in?
Yeah, so the, well, if you've been out to the Cop property, you know, the, the stone dust stops. After it splits, it kind of stops right just past the Y. So this will continue all the way up past the dog park, connect to the bridge that was put in back, I think, in two thousand and sixteen, and then also include additional work out past the bridge. So it's not going to get us all the way around, but it's a significant piece.
So we currently have stone dust that runs on the, excuse me, on the left-hand side.
Yes, right.
It goes for ways.
Right, and so the eventual goal will be to connect that all the way around.
Connect that whole thing. Okay, all right. Thank you. No, this is great. I thank you, and thank you again for the effort to submit the grant and get this money and keep modernizing our fabulous trail system that we have here, so.
Well, Tabitha gets the credit. She, she wrote the grant.
She, she wrote the, yes, so it's been great. Thank you very, very much, and I'm in favor of it also, so.
I don't see any other hands, so I will take a vote on two zero two four dash six eight eight Recreation Trails Grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Counsel Bordaline, I didn't hear your vote?
I'm an aye.
Thank you. Passes eight to zero to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is two zero two four dash seven three five, Open Space Discussion. This is on page nine of our packet. There is no motion prepared.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. Just wanted to come before the council tonight. There'd been a request to kind of give an update generally on open space in town and where we are percentage-wise, what the town's been doing, and just want to give a little bit of an overview on that. I do have a couple of slides to just kind of give a little bit of a explanation. You know, pictures really are worth a thousand words with this, but we had a referral memo in there, but you know, essentially, Town of Groton has about twenty-nine point five, twenty-nine point six of its total land area classified as preserved or protected land. The two thousand and sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development had that number somewhere around twenty-seven point eight percent of a total percentage of the town's land area.
The presentation is no longer on the screen. I think Mr. Burt's trying to bring them up, just to let you know.
Yeah, no, that's fine. These are not in the presentation. The presentation are literally just a couple of maps to give a little context to things on location. But, you know, when we look at, the state of Connecticut has said that their goal for open space protection per municipalities under the Green Plan, which is the Connecticut's comprehensive open space acquisition strategy, the state had a goal of twenty-one percent of Connecticut's land area to be open space by the year two thousand and twenty-three. And again, so the state goal of about twenty-one percent, we have over twenty-nine percent of our total land area is open space. The federal recently came out with a recommendation that a total of thirty percent, I think it was Executive Order fourteen thousand and eight, asked for achieving the goal of conserving at least thirty percent of our lands and waters by two thousand and thirty. So different organizations, different entities have different goals of what should or shouldn't be open space. And this discussion of protected land, open space, parkland can get very confusing when you look at how the state defines open space, how we define it in our Plan of Conservation and Development. There's a lot of layers of it. So when, you know, we look at, for example, our school properties, which open schools have active ball fields on them, we don't consider those as protected open space. So when you look at like the ball fields at the high school, those are not open space. Just, you know, to give people a little bit of context, things like Bluff Point, definitely open space. Haley Farm, open space. The wetlands around the airport, not open space. So, you know, wetlands on private property, not considered protected open space. Just to give people a little bit of a context to some of the things that we're looking at. Also, I think sometime, maybe in the next month or two, the Conservation Commission will be coming to talk to you about their yearly update, and they'll talk a little bit about some of this open space as well. The map that's up right here, breaking it down into some different open space categories, and you probably can't see the, in that first map, the green is land by, owned by the Town of Groton. Yellow would be other municipal, like Groton Utilities, Groton Long Point, Monford Cove, or the city. The orange is state land, the blue is land trusts, and the pink is others, such as cemeteries. Again, just giving you a general framework of where we have open space around town. And then the next map looks a little bit more at accessibility and say what is, what the public can actually get into. So for example, a farm that has a conservation easement on it, it might be protected land, but it's not necessarily open to the public. It's still private property. So some of that, in this map, when you look at the green, that's accessible. It has trails, or parks, or playgrounds. Red is not accessible to the general public. I should also note that this map is a little bit on the conservative side. So, for example, those parcels with only a small portion of accessible open space might be listed as red, just so we don't confuse the public as well. There are some cases where the land might be open to the public, but there's no established trails or other amenities, so it's listed, and this is not necessarily open land. Both of these maps are listed up on the town's webpage. Trying to think of some other highlights here. Yeah, happy to answer any questions. You know, there's always a little bit of that push-pull of how much land is enough protected land. And I think that's something, when we think about our properties, where we're going in the long term, we have to weigh how much land we want to have protected in Groton, as well as, once we protect something, are we setting aside the resources to make sure that we're properly, you know, moving forward with maintaining these properties? The stewardship, I know that's something our Conservation Commission's been looking at a lot. I know, you know, one of the council members or some are involved in different organizations around town, doing cleanup and establishing trails and clearing invasive species. It takes a lot of work to maintain and steward these properties, and that's also a big push in the future. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So this discussion was brought forward because it is one of our council goals, to discuss how much open space are we looking for in our community? Just, can you, can we just put one of the maps back up just really quickly? Potentially the one that's open to, that one would be good. The last one, that was?
Yeah.
If that's possible? Because I know that the council has had discussions about, over on the west side, up in D4, and the lack of availability of open space and parks over there. So I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, that that's what, the area that we've had, it's basically the top-left quadrant, I would maybe say. So I'll open it up to questions. Counselor McBride?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative for me. Just one question, and it pertains to this map. What percentage of the land is green versus red? Because the red's not really accessible, so what would that percentage be? Do we know that? Like, I always think of open space as accessible, but you made it pretty clear that that's not the case in this map.
Give me a second, I might have that one.
I'm sorry?
Oh, give me a second. I think I have that.
I don't need it right now, I'm just wondering.
Oh, okay.
Because there's a lot of land that's considered open space, that's, that's not accessible.
So publicly accessible, about 59.7%, not publicly accessible, about 40.2%.
Forty, I'm sorry?
Forty point two.
Okay.
So about 60 and 40.
Great, that's the only question I had, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Through the, through the mayor, I'm just, this is accessible. So on this particular map, the green would be state property, Avalonia Town, and Gosa property primarily. Is that probably correct?
I think that's probably correct, yes. Because like, for example, the Groton Utilities land is not accessible.
So then, and then the red would be not accessible, so that, would that include the P490 properties plus like Groton Utilities, or?
No, because those are not protected properties. Those are just assessed in a certain way. Those don't have a constant, a permanent conservation restriction on them. They're assessed a certain way, and if you're not in that program, you have to, you know, enroll in that program for a certain period of time, and you get a tax benefit. But it doesn't guarantee that those properties are protected in perpetuity.
So I'm just going to assume that the bulk of the red in the center, sort of the Groton Utilities land?
Yes.
The red down in the lower center is probably the airport land?
No.
No?
Airport is not considered open space.
So what would that red be at the bottom?
Bottom, over by Groton Long Point, Groton Long Point Association land?
Groton Long Point Conservation land?
Yeah.
And then the red that's up at the sort of upper right-hand corner?
A portion of that is the Mystic Education Center property, I believe.
Okay, all right. Do you have a sense of, I know we don't consider the schools open, it's really whoever's definition decides what they think of as open space. If we added the school properties into our 29.6%, do you have a sense of what that would be, if you added sort of all those, all that land together?
It would, it might kick us over 30%. And I mean, that's the tough thing, is because there's land that, for all practical purposes, won't be developed or will be used for recreation purposes. But because it doesn't have a permanent restriction on it, or it's not specifically dedicated for that, so, for example, Clutchester is not listed on this as open space. And that's something that I think, you know, that the balance is still there of what is the, the future use of that property. So these efforts, you know, I want to thank some of my staff, Noah from our GIS coordinator, as well as the Conservation Commission for putting a lot of time and effort into this, because we've literally spent years arguing over, well, what is open space? How do you define open space? Because what each person thinks of as open space is very different. One of my staff members worked down in Georgia a number of years ago, and has a book that is this thick that he had worked on, looking at a county level of how they were looking at open space, and they spent a lot of time just defining it. Larry Dunn and Tom from the Conservation Commission, myself and our team, spent a lot of time going around about, what are we including? How do we do this in a conservative way, and in the best way to really, you know, capture what is protected? But we also don't want to send the wrong message, because we don't want to send the public trouncing around on private property. So that's where we're hitting this point. But when it comes to making policies and decisions of, well, how much land is enough protected open space, or enough protected land or recreation land, that gets difficult. You know, one of the other things that's not really shown on here is there are a lot of amenities on the US federal government property associated with the Navy and the Navy base. We don't count those pieces as that. Not something that I wanted to get really too much into tonight, but my department and Parks and Rec have been working together with the consultant that did the recreation analysis, looking at land up in that D4 quadrant of the town. And what we realized is, I think it's like upwards of 1,800 housing units up there are Navy housing. And all of those folks that live there have access to the Navy amenities. So when we think about, oh, it's really short up in that area on what resources are, they have access to the community centers there. Now, everybody not, might not take advantage of it, but according to our contacts at Balfour Beatty, they've said if you live in that housing, you can use not the on-base stuff, but things that are located off-base. So again, it, how you mix all this together, it certainly can get confusing.
So would you say the, through the, through the mayor, the simplest definition of open space would be if it has a deed restriction of some kind on it, that's generally, if you brought it down to its simplest level? And it could be a state restriction, a town restriction, a land trust restriction? It could be any one of those, but it's?
So our 2016, well, yes, but that also won't capture everything. So that, that's the tricky part. Like, our 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development talks about dedicated open space, managed open space, and then kind of facilities. So that dedicated open space usually includes land owned by the state, municipal organizations, land trusts. It can include privately-owned land, but set aside for open space maybe as part of development. That managed open space includes land that is used to preserve for some other purpose other than open space, but provides open space characteristics. This might include land owned by Groton Utilities, cemeteries, golf courses, the YMCA and the beaches, and facilities, which include some land at public facilities such as schools, that's used for open space or recreation. So those were kind of the 2016 POCD definitions. And I know our Conservation Commission is actually working on some new definitions that they want to include in their next rendition of their plan, looking at like protected open space and preserved open space, and some different pieces along those lines.
Do you have a, can you tell me what the number, I know we're at the 29.6, which kind of puts us in the 30 by 30 category?
Yep.
How many acres is that left to go?
I think we're like 80, 90 acres.
90?
90, 90.74 acres.
Okay.
90.7, okay. And do you have a sense of how many communities in Connecticut have sort of hit that 30 by 30?
I actually don't have that spreadsheet in front of me, but that was one we were working on. I, I don't.
Do you have a, is it, is it a goal that other communities are using?
I'm not aware of other communities that are going towards that goal. We were actually trying to put something together, looking at percentage of open space, and also looking at a percentage of affordable housing. Because when you look at kind of mixing those two together, we have what I think the fifth highest percentage of affordable housing in the state, a very high number. And we have a tremendously high percentage of open space in the town. Yes, some of it is state land, you know, whether it's Bluff Point, Haley Farm, and the Tilcon property, but there's other, you know, areas in this region, you know, for also how dense some of our town is, and the amount of infrastructure we have with water, sewer, utilities. We have a very high percentage of open space, of protected open space, I should say. Because, you know, if you look north of Route 184 and 95, there's a lot of, a lot of trees, a lot of green land up, up that way, which is not necessarily protected today.
Okay. And do you have a sense of, what's the tree cover in Connecticut? I know that nationally it's sort of in the 60%, I think, but Connecticut?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of what we, what we have and where we are compared to other communities and the, I mean, enormous efforts been made here in Groton to develop, you know, all the different open space properties that we have, so.
We are doing a tree study as well.
So we'll have all counted?
Yeah. See, Mark or Tabitha might have known those.
Sure. Okay, good for the moment. Thank you.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Reiner. Before I start my questions, I'm going to put some information. I do want to thank, I believe it was Chair of the Conservation Commission, Tom Olson. He put a great document together that was forwarded to the council, I believe, back in last September, that had pretty much all the undeveloped land. That was super helpful. So some numbers, according to that document, was that the 30% number is 6,113.1 acres. And then the current protected slash preserved is 5,817.35. There's land that is 205.01 with easements, so a total of 6,022.36, which gets to the 90.74 acres needed for open space. So I just kind of, I had, my first question was in regards to, looking at the map, it is the Avery Farm, Avery Farm and, no, Avery Farm and Candlewood property. There are certain pieces of land that, that, if you look at that property, it's a square, and then there's a circle in there that is not protected. Is there any way that that property could potentially be developed? Or no, because it'd have to cut through protected land?
I'd have to do a little research on that one.
Okay. Because, and my interpretation of that would be no. So I don't know what the future is, that it's private property, I'm not going to speculate, but, and then I see, I believe, according to your map, it looks like it's Gunji Wamp Road, there's also some surrounded land as well. So just thinking of that, could possibly be, just put it in there, and that could get to 90%. And then our current schools, based on the document Mr. Olson provided, were very high in acres. I believe the Northeast Academy School has a whole bunch of land right behind it, that I believe is wetland. So it's really interesting. I just want to get, kind of pick your brain a little bit. How much privately-owned land could be protected in the future through donation of the property or future easements on it? Like, how much land in the town is like undeveloped, but could be then protected in the future, in the long run?
It all depends on how much money you want to spend, or, you know, also, when we see new development happen, a lot of times we get conservation easements on some of the wetlands, some of the undevelopable property. But, you know, similar to, as we've spoken about, some of our own town properties, developers don't want to say just, or property owners, to cut off the wetlands and donate it, because that will then count against their total land area, and hence their density, intensity, that of what they can develop in the future. Because a lot of our land use calculations are based upon the total amount of land area that you have. The total impervious surface that you can have is based upon the total size of the acreage. So what happens is, as these properties develop, whether it's a subdivision, we'll see, you know, open space set aside as part of that, or some of these other commercial or mixed-use, you know, multifamily developments, there can also be open space or, you know, recreation lands set aside. To pick a number of how much could be protected, I mean, it's, it's a really, that's not something you just kind of put your finger on a little bit. I, I think it's also, I always go with the assumption that if it's not protected, theoretically it could be developed. With that said, we have a lot of wetlands in town. We have a lot of very steep slopes, a lot of ledge and rock outcroppings, which, you know, can you build within certain areas of wetlands if you get relief from our inland wetlands commission? Are small portions of wetlands occasionally filled in as part of a larger project? Yes. But it is not the norm, that we would see large swaths of, you know, highly functioning wetlands actually get developed within the town. We also have incredibly strict stormwater standards, so even how stormwater is directed to those wetland areas is also highly regulated. But when I, when I also think of, you know, when I talk about land north of 95 or north of 184, we have very limited sewer capacity in some of these areas, or there's no sewer lines or water lines. So the, the density that's going to be in those areas, or the development potential is also incredibly low.
Through the mayor, is there any possibility of a subdivision happening in the town, based on your knowledge of current land that's out there, that's either privately-owned or town-owned?
Oh, there are some, I know of, I don't have any active applications today, but subdivisions of land, yeah. There's two that I'm aware of, one which might be a couple of lots, but there's, people are always going to want to subdivide land. Sometimes it's small parcels, that somebody's doing a single lot split. Other times, they might want to do a larger subdivision of, of property. We haven't had a large, single-family or subdivision of land in quite some time.
Yeah, that, that's where, that's where I was kind of getting at, because I was, I remember you had previously stated that, in your time here, you hadn't seen a large, single-family subdivision here in a long time. I thank you, I'm going to come back around for a second turn, because my time's going to expire.
Yeah. In the time I've been here, the largest subdivision of single-family homes that I've seen was seven lots.
And how many years?
Coming up on 10 years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Merritt?
I was going to ask about the property on Gunji Wamp Road, but I think Counselor Gajewski already spoken of that. I believe that's state property?
The old YMCA property, I think?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the way the deed was written anyways. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have comments? Counselor Rusk?
I just want to say thank you for this information. I think it solidifies the conversation that we had previously in this council, that District Four definitely needs some open space. It was very interesting to see how much, like, we have a lot of, of open space, and I'm very appreciative of that. As a Groton resident, I love hiking, so it's great to get out, but we definitely need more, more development in that D4 area specifically. So, thank you.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I do want to emphasize that I do love our open space, you know, being a former college cross-country runner, having a large amount of trails that I could train on was, I definitely benefited from, and one of the reasons why I love this town so much. I just kind of wanted to pick your brain about some town-owned properties. I, looking through Chair Olson's document that he put together, I was kind of looking over at like potential properties that may be developed, or may be preserved or protected by the town. And I was just kind of astonished to find that properties that were larger than five acres, that the town owned, that could be developed, could And I was just kind of astonished to find that properties that were larger than five acres, that the town owned, that could be developed, could not be developed, and had some issues on them, was very limited. Do you see any possible increase in potential land coming into the town? Are you aware of any that could be coming in the future at all?
Land for?
Either development or open space purposes?
I know that there are, again, conversations, you know, that, I was talking to the manager today about there's a potential development. Recently went before the zoning board of appeals, looking, I think it was for a height variance, that they were denied, but that they're looking at some other options of how they can move forward that would be significant in size, so big that I would need another building inspector just to work on that project alone. That's something that's not really on, on folks radar. There's other, you know, a lot of multifamily housing pressure, as we've seen, you know. We, we often talk about that sixty-five hundred housing units that we need in town. There's a lot of developers looking at land, but there's not a lot of great land that has water and sewer that can accommodate. As far as open space pieces, I hear rumors that some of our conservation organizations are discussing and having conversations with property owners about acquiring more land. But I'm not involved in, in those conversations.
Might be worth noting too, that a lot of the land in the north, the state has restrictions on sewers that you can't run sewers. That's a lot of the north.
And, you know, I think one of the tricky parts is we look at some of these town properties and say, oh, well, we need to, we want to get us over that twenty-nine point five, twenty-nine point six percent and get us over thirty percent. So let's restrict these properties, but you don't know what the future town uses of those pieces may be. So to tie your hands now on something that we have no, no plan to develop, you know, the, the wildlife is still there, the habitat is still there. I'm a huge fan and proponent of our open spaces in Groton. I've almost run over Counsel Jones a few times on my mountain bike while he's been out hiking. And, you know, and in others, I usually have a bell, so if he hear me ding him, just turn around, watch out quick, jump to the side. But in all seriousness, it's, I, I'm also an avid steward for these areas. But you just have to start weighing that, all right, how much is enough? And if something is already essentially, you know, in its use, we want to make sure that the town has those options in, in the future to use that property and not tie your hands on it now.
I appreciate the tie your hands analogy. I think that's a really good point to bring up and. I think that's it. I want to yield my time.
All right.
Yep.
You all set?
Yep.
All right. Looks like you were thinking about it.
I was thinking about it.
All right. Counsel Portelon?
Um, thank you. For me, it's a no-brainer that, once we develop land, you never can get it back in its entirety or fresh snow kind of perspective. I think we are a very unique town. We have EB, we have Pfizer, we have the Navy Base, we have the, the electric boat, which are industrial in, in nature, which are beneficial, because they bring a lot of economic development. But for some, they also have, every, every good thing has an effect, and it does bring more pollution. There's other towns that don't have the, granted, we don't have a nuclear power plant. So it's so important that we have the open, open space to counterbalance some of these things. It was already stated before that we are having a, the climate is getting, and it's so important to have the trees and the coverage that we need to keep it cooler here. The more you develop, you have more impervious surfaces, which create runoff. Look at all the flooding that's running on around. You know, development is great, but it needs to be measured. And that is a concern of mine. I don't see a problem with protecting land to meet the needs of our community. If it wasn't, the people back in the day, some of my friends, actually family members that protected Bluff Point and Avery Point, Haley Farm, we wouldn't have those. And we didn't get those easy. People were against protecting those, and they had a fight and raised money. So my hats off to the people and the forerunners who protected land that we do have. I'm not saying all the land has to be protected. I'm just simply saying it needs to be measured. There's a need for more housing. And I was reading this article a while back, and it said, another town was facing the same thing. And some folks said, well, why this town? Why not the neighboring town? There's neighboring towns that have less property that's not been developed in comparison. Just because we're here doesn't mean we have to meet this, you know, huge need and grow exponentially if it's not healthy for our community. And so my concerns are worrying about runoff and flooding. We can keep developing, but we're gonna have increased flooding, which we're already seeing. We can keep developing, but we're gonna have more hotter weather and lack of shade. So, anyway, once you develop it, you lose it. So for me, I, I thank folks who worked really hard to kind of identify this plan. I think there needs to be broader deep research. Just because we think we need more housing in one capacity, what are some other things that are needed? And what are the ramifications by developing at that threshold to the surrounding area? So you meet the needs of the implement of your economic driver, but if we don't meet the climate needs, then we don't really have anything in the end, while all this floods. Um, there's a lot of areas in this town that are already been filled in, like downtown Mystic. They brought in filler. That's why it floods. The Quantic Plains Park was also.
Counsel Portelon, your time has expired. Would you like to take a second turn?
No, I'll yield for now. If you guys give me, we do need to find a way to increase the, the size of the screen, John. I don't know if you can. I can't see the timer. Or if you give me a one-minute warning, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Does it give a warning on our timer?
It doesn't, but I can announce it.
It gives that yellow light.
Yeah. She may not be able to see it, so I can.
I, I can't see at all. Last time, John, you zoomed in, remember, from the screen?
I didn't zoom. I just moved it over. It was just a larger screen at that time.
Yeah, can you, can you move it over a little bit perhaps? You can't barely see it.
Okay. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, Mr. Reiner rides up behind me sometimes. Over the last year, I've probably, over a thousand miles of walking on our Groton trails, so been pretty busy. How many houses, I know you said in the last ten years, you only remember one subdivision of seven houses. How many houses are sort of built on average in Groton?
I, not including, say, multifamily, because I think that usually gets, that's almost like one permit. But I think we've seen somewhere around forty, so, forty or so permits per year of new construction. Let me get back to you on the exact number. I know that that's actually in our house, the housing market analysis report, which is on our webpage. But I feel like the average number is somewhere around forty units per year.
Correct. Regular houses, just a regular family house, that kind of house.
Yeah, that, that may have actually also included the hundred and fifty or so units at Gunji Wamp, which were built about eight years ago, which was multifamily. So let me double check that. That might be all units, because I, I know we haven't had that many single families. So that might be, our housing built has not been keeping up with the need. And that's a trend that's not just Groton, that's New England. It's a lot of the country, other than, say, Texas and Florida.
Do you have a sense, through the, do you have a sense of a community this size, roughly thirty-eight thousand people or something? What would be a normal sort of build, is that, of units per year for a community this size?
It all really depends on what the market is and what is happening with your employment base, your population, size of households. So really, a lot of it's based off those demographic trends. And, you know, some of that, I think at the last council meeting, we talked a little bit about, there's a DOD grant that we're gonna be getting to look, to do a much deeper dive into housing, do a lot more community engagement. Hear from people about housing and not look at housing just in Groton, but do a little bit of a regional push.
Point of information?
Your point of information?
I should say, I'm gonna call point of order, but I'm gonna hold off. Housing is not what's on the agenda, is open space right now.
So we gotta stick to the topic at hand.
I was just trying to see what the pressure was on our open space. So that's really the point of my question. Do you have a sense in, I know we have a lot of need for property in the D four, open space in the D four area. Is there any, are there any properties in that area that have sort of the size that would make them, I mean, not like a housing lot, but something that's, you would say, okay, we kind of, we got some extra pieces? Is there available land like that currently, or is it, is it denser, and there's just too many other things in that area?
I mean, there, there's certainly available land, but whether it, you know, what's the need? So one of the biggest needs that's been identified when we've looked at parks and rec, some of it is just, people are looking for open space trails. So not necessarily active playfields, but is there walking trails? So, you know, up in that northwest section of town, outside of the Navy land, and it might be that it's not exactly in the D four, it might be shifted over a little bit east. I'd have to look specifically at, say, that boundary, but, you know, there are some other unprotected lands that, you know, we've had our eye on. But again, you know, if you're looking at it for the purpose of creating trails and building it out, that just comes with not only the cost of acquiring the land, but then also building the trails, maintaining the trails. You know, the, some of the trails I've been out on recently in town, there's, you know, we have a windstorm and things are blocked for weeks because of staff, either for the town or some of these state properties. They just don't get out there maybe as frequently as they could and.
So open space doesn't necessarily have to just be a big chunk of land. It could be a trail that's just, that goes between several different, a series of properties over a distance.
Yes. And even sometimes through development applications, you can see how the linkage of the excess open space from those developments can then be linked together. We have a little bit of that in this town, but I, a lot of other towns that I'm familiar with, you've seen much more successful integration, because they have maybe more single-family subdivisions that happen, like those cluster type, you know, open space subdivisions. And you see lands out aside, which then starts connecting one to the other.
So would the, would the tri-town trails be an example of that?
Something like that.
Something like that, where it just goes from, goes through several different towns, it's not particularly wide, but it, it's regarded as open space and open recreation.
Yeah, and, and some of that might be, you know, on-road, off-road type trails as well.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Counsel Portelon?
Thank you. You know, again, I think it's extremely important to make sure we have the accessibility of open space throughout our town and equitably distributed. I can agree that District Four doesn't really have a whole lot. But I do think that we, we should look at ways of, you know, accommodating that into our plan to have open space in all the districts. From looking at a land development standpoint, I mean, we can say we wanna, I mean, it was asked the question, how many per year should we be developing? At what point would that number be, though, when the land runs out? I mean, we can't just keep developing. There can't be a magical number that you want to keep developing. We can only hit capacity of what we have. What I'd love to see, which I've seen some studies on, is where towns have looked at ways to look at their demographics, look their topography, and really weigh, what can they safely develop? And where, and how, based on the anatomy of the community and the way the layout of our, our wetlands and everything are. It's great that a lot of people want to live here, but some would say that's not the most important thing to capitalize on and just keep developing. I'm not saying we shouldn't develop at all. Absolutely. There's definitely some areas that needs. But I think we have to be careful because of the storm surges and things coming in, we will put ourselves in a bind. Both of my cousins are older than me. They're in their late seventies. They live in Florida. We talked about Florida and Texas being forerunners for development. Areas that weren't flooding there now are flooding because it's so overdeveloped. So we have to be careful. You might have a house, but what are you gonna have after that? Anything else? What about the storm and the flooding that's gonna come as a result? So I just encourage that we do some deeper dives into that.
Point of information, Counsel Portelon, you have one minute.
Thanks. Environmental side of how that impact is gonna look on our community. I would love for us to be the most thriving community with the most about housing, but is it really practical? Is it safe? Is it healthy? Long term, if we sit here trying to make decisions, who's gonna come out from the fallout of our decisions of overdeveloping? Making sure we have proper open space and its balance allows that runoff in protections. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a point of parliamentary inquiry, I did zoom in on my side. I can see the dot kind of now. So thank you to Gajewski.
Thank you. So this came before us because we put as the goal as a council to have a discussion on how much open space should we have in Groton. And as a council, we put this forward as something that we wanted to have discussion on. I'm not exactly sure which direction we want to go in this, other than maybe to have a priority or prioritize as a council what we're looking to do. If we are looking to focus in on one area such as D four. And I'm not quite, me personally, not speaking for the council, but I'm not so worried about the military base in Balfour Beatty, because they do have their own items. But other parts of the community are not, from what I understand, allowed in there to use their facilities. Which unless we potentially approach them and work out some kind of agreement, maybe that part, that part of town maybe can use it, or something of that nature, and we financially can help assist. I'm not sure if that's possible. It was something that Mr. Burt had brought up with me some time ago. We're pretty close to thirty percent, and you're not really sure where we stand in relation to other towns in Connecticut.
I, I can get that information. I, the data is in my office. I just don't have it at my very fingertips now. That's something I could probably get in the next week to the manager. Actually, the Council of Government's just released a report looking at open space percentages of other communities within the Council of Government's area. And that, again, it's out there right now. It's a draft report that they're still working on, but give me a couple of days, I can have that to the manager.
All right, and the state is looking for the goal of all the towns to have twenty-one percent open space. And from what I read, and I might have these backwards, but the state, they want like state-owned eleven or ten percent, and then they want the municipal, the municipality to have maybe the eleven or ten percent to equal up to the twenty-one percent. So we have, I think we have far surpassed that. And when it becomes to the federal percentage that you had mentioned, the thirty percent, was that of federally owned land? Or is that a goal for the towns, that they're giving the goals for the town? Or does a federal government goal is to own thirty percent?
That was.
Because I've Googled this, I'm researching this, and I'm trying to figure out like where we are in comparison, and I couldn't find it on the national level, other than the federal government wants to have thirty percent.
Yeah, it was Executive Order fourteen thousand and eight, and within there, it talked about conserving our nation's lands and waters. And looking at achieving a goal of conserving at least thirty percent of our lands and waters by 2030. That's pretty broad, and I'm not exactly sure, I, I don't have the exact definition of it, but.
To make like federal parks and such, is that what they're talking about? Or are they gonna take our, like, what we have protected and put it into their number?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I think they were really just looking at, you know, conserving our lands, the country's lands and waters by 2030 of that percentage.
Okay. And I would have to say that I also have a different idea of what open space is as well. Because I do consider open space to be also property that you can't access. It's not just open to the public, because as even Counsel Portelon had said, it's, there's climate issues and trees and carbon sequestration and all these other things that, even though you can't access it and enjoy it, it's, it's serving a purpose. So I also want to give kudos to conservation members in our community, who I know have fought a long battle, I'll take my second, who fought a long battle, because I, I think their, their goal is to, you know, it's a long haul battle for them, and that they have gotten us up to thirty percent, almost. And, and it wasn't always easy, and there were a lot of fights along the way, so I give them a lot of kudos, because I remember reading a lot of stories over the years, the decades of, you know, some big fights. of, you know, some big fights. But we are here where we're at, and now I think as just a goal for this council is to decide, where do we want to put our focus, and do we want to focus more on certain things? And maybe one of those goals, just from other conversations we've had, me personally, I would like to look at some things in D4 and try and figure out ways to help that part of the community who has been asking for a long time for more. And it seems like other parts of our community, from my viewpoint, have much more open space. They have a lot more accessibility to open space into trails, into all kinds of things, and D4 is definitely lacking. And D4 does go down, you know, into almost center Groton, and I think that's a section that really needs... And if you looked at the map that was up earlier, there's Gunji Wamp is in red, that's, I think, state-owned, used to be the...
The old YMCA property, yeah, but there's not great access onto that property right now. In the future, is that something we could potentially work with the state to see if there's ways of getting access there? Certainly.
Right. I've taken a tour of that property, and it is a gorgeous piece of property and with the Pico Azipas Nature Center, and it was...
Yeah, back when I first got here, I talked to the state about that, they said they were working on a study for that property, which has been a long time, so it's, it'd be worth getting an update on that.
Okay, so I thank you for coming out and giving us all this insight and giving us a lot to think about, and I think we as a council just need to prioritize and figure out what we want to do next and which way we want to focus. Because it doesn't mean everything's off the table, it just means like where are our priorities and which direction would you like to go, and where those priorities are. So, thank you so much for such an informational presentation.
You're welcome. And then just one other plug, as many of you know, we're starting on our plan of conservation and development. A lot of this, I'm sure, will be discussions that come up as we're working on that long-range plan. A lot of this data will be out there for the public to look at and see, and as we kind of, you know, push through developing that plan over the next 18 months, that's something we're going to be seeking a lot of community input on and maybe even identifying some, some places to go and where to put some resources, so, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, up next on our agenda is 2024-680-1, the Climate Resiliency Plan Steering Committee. This is on page 10 and 11 of our packet. There's no motion, so would you like to give us an update?
Sure. Manager has a couple of slides on this, so, again, we've been talking about doing this for a while. What was previously referred to as our Climate Action Plan, but really it's a Climate Resilience Plan, we received a $200,000 grant from the state for that project. We also had a former CIP item for $85,000, and the grant was finally executed by the state in July so we can begin work. We're hoping to issue the RFP on that in the next month or so. And, you know, there's a number of things that we have been doing, the town of Groton's done a lot of work already on climate resiliency, climate mitigation, looking at heat, but we really want to look at a much more holistic approach from a stakeholder engagement. And one of the things that, that grant from the state was asking for was for us to really look at a stakeholder-driven approach with a lot of community outreach, and that was one of the things that helped really prioritize our application to them for some of the funding. So, one of the things we did, oh, I think it was a little over a month ago now, June 26th, we kind of kicked this process off with working with the Nature Conservancy, and we did a climate resilience building workshop. We had a number of folks in this room working, I know at least, you know, one council member was there, a number of others, the town manager, the department heads, folks from a lot of our partner organizations, representatives from the state, Boquonic Bridge, the base, the city, et cetera, and we even had some high school students that participated. And we want to use that level of approach moving forward, because although we've done a lot of work on climate change and sea level rise in the past, it's been from, I think, a smaller group that's really been engaged with it. And we want to make sure that everybody in town is getting engaged, or as much as we can of 38,000 people, you know, we're not going to be able to get everybody engaged with that. But both Ledge Light and Parks and Rec have done some really creative ways of working with and employing community liaisons to help get out and spread the word about things that we're working on and get feedback from people. So, that's a little bit of the model that we're looking for as we move forward. I also want to say that, you know, the last number of projects, so our Mystic Climate Resilience Plan that we did recently, we put together a steering committee on that of some community members, some experts within the field, and that was something that a lot of these kind of steering committees, we put them together for a project, we have them help us guide the staff through the project on some of the technical or some of these outreach items, and then when the project goes away, the steering committee goes away. And that's the similar approach we're going to be doing with this. And, but one of the items we want to do within that kind of Climate Action Plan is to look at, what's the best model for Groton, for our future kind of implementation group as part of that? The state law allows communities to actually put together, what is it, Flood Prevention, Climate Resilience, and Erosion Control Boards, and that's a little bit of the process that we're actually going to evaluate as we're doing this larger planning process. So, again, you know, tonight we weren't looking for a motion, a little bit more just kind of a consensus from the council that, yeah, this, this sounds good, you're moving in the right direction. Actually, I didn't really go through the slides too much, I was just kind of speaking off our memo, but, you know, again, the first one did get into the recap of what that Climate Resilience Plan is, looking at mitigation, adaptation, and then really an accountability framework, and that gets into the implementation, because unfortunately, sometimes we put these plans together, and then how do we implement them? And how do we make sure we're holding ourselves accountable to make sure that they get integrated into the things in our daily, weekly, monthly, yearly tasks, you know, how we budget things in the future? So, that's something we really want to integrate into this plan. Next slide. Again, that community building workshop that we're talking about, really successful, a lot of good feedback from folks, and I think it was great to hear the variety of voices and perspectives of people that we don't normally hear from. And last one. And again, just kind of that, the steering committee not being a permanent group, but more helping us through this particular process. Happy to field any questions about what we're doing and kind of the direction we're going.
Okay, do you have any questions, comments? Council Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You said the steering committee is based on volunteers, it won't be a board or a commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because then they won't have to do, they can just volunteer and share their interests with you.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, it's sometime volunteering, voluntolding, you know, we'll usually reach out, and we like to utilize as many community partners as we can. And again, this is something that we'll reach out to certain groups, you know, and I, we look to, you know, reach out as far as we can. But yeah, it's not an established, you know, board or commission, it's not something that's developed by the council.
Thank you.
Yeah. Council Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and through the, through the mayor, as a member of that group that met, I think it was really, it was very well done. I think the encouraging part of that whole day-long session was, it was a whole lot of people we've never seen before.
Yeah.
So, it shows that there's a lot of interest, other than the sort of the normal people that sort of volunteer for things, that it was really broad, so that was, it was really nice to see, and there's a lot of great ideas in there. So, I just, I guess my more of a comment is more of, opposed to a question, is the committee is something that's flexible, that can grow or shrink as you need based on whatever the project is that you're, that you're doing?
Yes.
That's sort of the, the goal. And do you see this, is the steering committee needed to help put together the, the big plan, or do you see the steering committee as something that continues on after the plan is done?
No, this particular steering committee, once we're done with the plan, we're done, you know, we're all done with the steering committee, but could some of those folks volunteer on some type of an implementation committee, or, you know, we're hoping that through the plan that we do, it'll actually make a recommendation of, you know, here's what you should be looking at next, to make sure that there's accountability so that this plan gets implemented. Because, you know, it's, we as staff bring these items to you, but it's also important for you to hear from members of the community about, this is how you should be budgeting your fund. This is, you know, as we think about future CIPs, is it consistent with, you know, our Climate Resilience Plan? Are we, when we're putting heating systems in, as we're putting new town buildings in, you know, things along those lines, that we are putting our money where our mouth is? So, that, that piece is also important.
So, you could see the steering committee is almost having babies of other committees that, that develop, we don't know what they are at the moment, but we will know as we kind of go through the process of, this, it generates its own sort of children out of that group.
It certainly could, but it also creates people that are more informed and engaged in the community, which I think is something we can never have enough of.
Good. Good. I encourage you to keep moving forward, and if it has the same quality that we had from the other group, it's, I think also be some great results come out of it, so, thank you.
Thanks. Council Board along?
Thank you. I think it's important, too, when putting this together, I definitely support it, that would be also making sure that all folks of all walks of life inside the town are presented. What seems like an emergency plan for me that can run out to the store and buy the sandbags and the flood stuff is not the same problem for someone who maybe can't afford that. And what does that look like for that population? And so, I think it's very important that we're hitting all social economic areas, because what their fears of climate change are much different than folks that, you know, I'll speak for myself, come from a bit of privilege that can run out and purchase the items of emergencies coming. When emergencies present in our area, the climate thing and everything like this, a lot of folks are, don't have the resources or the money to protect themselves. So, those are, so it's interesting, the last agenda items plays into this. Also, another population as being a former military and, you know, living in military housing, at one point, a lot of the families that are new to the area don't know the climate, the climate needs of this particular area and the changes. We had that great session at St. Mark's Church in Mystic, and we had our, all of our town staff there and such, talking about climate. And one of the things that I had emailed was the, growing up on High Street in Mystic, noticing areas that flood now that didn't flood when I was a kid, and people move, coming back to the area, or visitors not realizing that, and there's not enough signage to say that certain roads flood, and some of the signs we have are kind of antiquated or not readable, so I appreciate the safety committee that's now taking, started taking that up as well. But I just hope that we can kind of bring in all sides of the community and find a way to make sure all of those types of stakeholders are at the table. We also might want to consider, we have Ledge Light on here, but we might want to look at like homeless and hospitality, because when climate change happens and emergencies, we need to think about how we're readying and preparing for our most vulnerable populations. Thank you.
All right, so I have some questions about things that I've read in here. First, as I read through, there was an item in here that said, you just said volunteers, but in here it also said compensating participants through stipends or gift cards. Will you be giving stipends?
We're not sure what we're going to be doing right now, so that might actually be, that's a strategy that could be used, that's something that we, we put out the RFP. Some of the funds that were allocated from the state grant do allow us to do that, we have to kind of work with purchasing and some of the things on how we actually do that, but that is something that some communities are doing specifically to address, you know, getting folks here that would have to take time off out of work or things along those lines. Something that we tried doing with a couple of workshops we've done in the past is having daycare available, making sure that we can have food available for people. So, those are all things that we can start doing to make sure all folks from all walks of life can, can attend.
I would, I would be in favor of having food available and childcare services and possibly even gift cards. I think actually handing cash out to people for being on a volunteer committee might be something that you might run into some issues.
Yeah. And sorry, that wasn't necessarily for like the steering committee, that would be sometimes for like focus group meetings or getting people to attend things more along those lines.
Yeah, even gift cards. And it does also say in here that, that although many people have been, have contributed to the town's prior climate work, there has not been an adequate representation from all communities and stakeholders within the town. I, I would like to second that as well. I think that we do need a variety of people throughout our whole community that should be contributing, that would be wonderful. And then sort of towards the last paragraph, it talks about creating a, the state legislation that enables municipalities to create a flood prevention, climate resilience, and erosion control boards. And so, are you saying that part of your committees will come give a recommendation to the council for this?
So, in the plan...
Or will you be implementing? I'm sorry.
No, no, sorry, I interrupted. So, as part of the plan, one of the things that I think we'll be putting out to the larger public is, this is a plan that won't be created by necessarily a steering committee. A lot of times those steering committees, we use them as sounding boards on certain items, but the plan is really, will be written mostly by a consultant based upon feedback that we're getting at public meetings, stakeholder surveys, focus groups, things along those lines. And one of the items that we will be addressing during the plan is, are what is the best way for us to implement this plan in the future? And so, that question of the state legislation that enables us to look at those kind of, that other group, is that something that's worthwhile in a recommendation for Groton? So, that is something that would be referenced within the plan of whether that's the right way or door number seven is the right way. But I think we're going to be looking at some different options of, what's that best way to make sure we implement this and hold ourselves accountable?
All right, because, yeah, because then it goes on to say, create an oversight group, or could suggest that oversight be absorbed into existing boards and commission functions as well?
Exactly.
Okay. And, yeah, so that's what I, I was sort of curious if this would be, those type of things would be driven by town staff or the town council? Because I, my own perspective is that sometimes climate change, or what we call climate resiliency, could be politicized, and there are differing opinions, I would put it nicely. And I don't, I just don't want it to become a political argument over some of the things. And I think it would be best sometimes that, there's a lot of talking going on in this document that you gave us about getting input and from all these various sources, but sometimes I hear from people like, there's a lot of talking, but when are we going to get down to what are the solutions? So, that's where, do you have any kind of timeline if this all goes through, like when we would get solutions? That you could give us a list of these items that, here's the things we could do on these locations, this is what we could do here, this is probably the cost, and that we could start prioritizing what is on that list and trying to take care of some of these items? Do you have any kind of timeline?
Yes. So, we hope to be done with this plan within 18 months, and one of the things as part of this plan, we want to have that priority action list. Because right now, you know, there are things that we're doing and trying to implement, there's been a number of grants that Megan, our, you know, Climate Resiliency Manager, has gone after based upon what's available, what's out there, projects that, you know, Public Works is working on, or Parks and Rec that we could kind of line up, you know, other climate resilience mitigation goals that we have. But we don't have that all-encompassing document, that, we don't have a roadmap right now. We have an economic development strategy, we have a plan of conservation and development, which is outdated and we're working on, but we don't have that when it comes to, you know, our climate resilience next step. So, this plan is going to be that roadmap for us for the next 10 to 15 years.
So, on our agenda, it says basically you're just looking to give us some informational, you're giving this presentation for informational purposes... you're giving this presentation for informational purposes, there's no formal action, other than a verbal consensus to move forward. So are you looking for a thumbs up from this council to say what you're doing is good and keep doing it and move forward with the steering committee and the process that we've seen here?
Yes.
So, all right, thumbs up, keep going. We're good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So up next is...
Madam President?
Yes. All right. So do you want to take a recess before we read going into the next section? Okay. So it is 7:58. We will take a recess for about 10 minutes or so. Do you need to push record?
Push record.
Says recording.
Okay. We're back from recess, 8:16. Next on our agenda is 2024-740, BOE Budget Discussion, Executive Session of Legal Opinions. Counselor McBride, would you like to read that?
Sure. Agenda item 2024-740, motion, I hereby move that members of the Town Council Committee, the long and town manager John Burke, town attorney Kristi Kelly, and attorney Rich Cody go into executive session. John Burke, Town Attorney Kristi Kelly, and Attorney Rich Cody go into executive session pursuant to General Statute, Section one dash two hundred, par. six, and par. Z, and par. S for the purpose of discussing a matter which would result in the disclosure of public records or the information contained therein, describe that being an attorney-client communication involving legal review of questions relating to the Board of Education funding.
Say it. Move by McBride. Seconded by Gajewski. Okay. We'll take a vote on two zero two four dash seven four zero. Just before we vote, I'd like to note that Counselor Pacino has joined us, and we'll be going into executive session along with Counselor Bordelain soon. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino, your vote?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right. That passes nine to zero to zero. We are now in executive session.
How are you doing?
Good, bye.